So I'd like to call this a regular school board meeting to order on October eighteenth. It is seven thirty-five. First order of business is a budget allegiance. Let the role reflect that all members are present. Was this meetings properly noticed?
Yes, it was. As a reminder, it's being recorded.
All right, welcome to visitors. Is there any public comment?
Yes, I meant.
Hi, I'm Akala. I just wanted to comment, especially after the previous meeting. Voice of support for the work that you guys as board members and staff are doing. It's not unnoticed, and I do think we have an excellent district with a lot of hearts in the right places to keep moving it forward. And that's very encouraging to see, both in my kids' lives as well as for the community as a whole. So just comments of support.
Any others? Moving on, we've got. Highlight on you. We've got the spring bus races, high school teacher, Brooke Razer, and. Got some students there. Come on up.
It's forty of the jobs we need to. We need to raise it to the bottom right there. It's electric. Like this. Scaly cup's been dropped a few times.
All right, hello. Thank you so much for having us here today for the highlight on youth. My name's Brooke Razer, and I am honored to be the middle of the teacher at the high school, as well as the outdoor ventures educator. Tonight, we are going to give you a brief summary showcasing the outstanding work that was done by the students at SEC as they completed their task that resulted in them stealing the championship title and trophy of the two thousand twenty-three Cedar Lake Speedway Bus Race. After this competition, students were left thrilled and excited. I was left very grateful and proud and leaving both of us hungry for more. All right, us as a senior class, and I want to give a shout out to Dom Harker, who was the driver, who has been the driver of previous years and was lead on this along with myself and the senior group. We went in together, trusting each other, and my gratitude still goes out to all of these individuals today and all of you in this room here, but we'll get to that a little bit later. All right, I'm gonna turn it over to these fellows behind me, and they're gonna help guide you through the process on what they did in this project. This is last year's bus race participants.
My name's AJ Sarnstrom, graduated last year. Jack Dalski, also a twenty-twenty-three graduate. So the bus begins, what do you get? You get a stock school bus retired from some school miles away from us. And then Cedar Lake buys it, and the process begins of finding ten districts willing to participate in bus race. The first thing you have to do with the bus is, of course, gut it for weight. The process goes windows, all windows minus the front window must be removed, seats, and then floors.
And then usually what we do is we cut floor out, another weight reduction, and then, you know, you have some motor work, and you got some paint.
Um, of course, there are safety precautions that have to go into the bus. So design up a roll cage, a seat stand, a rolling harness, which goes over the shoulders between the legs, and find the driver helmet. Um, as far as. Yeah, getting the bus, getting it ready. Um, also, painting it. Uh, we go with kind of a classic pink and white, Pink Panther. Anyone in here? Very classic theme for us. Um, we do sometimes black and blue or white. But last year was our Pink Panther year, and of course, with the help of wonderful teacher, Ms. Razer. She sponsors getting lights for the bus too, and have just a plain painted bus, gotta have flash, gotta have glamour. So have to wire in all sorts of lights, Christmas lights, uh, police lights, found police lights somehow. And then.
Don't worry, they will return it.
Um, what other lights do we have? Oh, we did have our hula guy. No, there's one, but, and then. Yeah, painting it. Um, usually left to the art department to come up with a design, we find kind of basic designs handed over to them, and they come up with a big overlay. Or in this hand, we kind of went with a freehand look of just keep throwing stuff on it, make it look realistic enough with the three colors, pink, white, and black. And then in the end, you get a school bus that looks somewhat like that. And then comparing to other school districts, many of them also look that way. All painted up, no windows, nothing you would want to send your child to school in.
Oh, come on.
You got a snack coming out of the hood there?
Yes, we do have a snack out of the hood. There's more. So lots of pictures were taken during this process because it's really a big deal for all of us, and we thank the board for approving it. We're told over and over again, it's really up to you guys to allow us the opportunity to build this bus. And you put a lot of trust on us to not become a bunch of, we'll say, clowns working on, yeah, the bus and ruining it for the whole school as a name. That picture was from the send-off. What, two days before the race? When they come, they send two drivers down and they basically take it and drive it all the way to Cedar Lake, which is half hour or so north.
Can you find our mixup?
Did they get any tickets on the way? They're so fast.
They.
Well, I'm pretty sure they had to contact the county before they even.
Yes, county, and they have permit slices, whatever they get, who knows? All I know is I don't get it, no one else gets it, so it's just them. And so, um, we also ran a merch line this year for the bus with our first year logo. As you can see, kind of here, the bags. I, they're really nice. Everyone should have one. Um, anything else you want to add?
Oh, great day.
Race day?
Wait, wait, who's this guy?
He's the sponsor. He's Dom's younger brother, future driver.
He's representing him. Yep, future driver.
So talk a little bit about the time, um, the Saturdays and all the extra time. Can you talk a little bit about much, how much time? Because I don't think anybody has any clue of the hours that you guys have into this.
Well, you get about five weeks before the race.
Yeah, usually, usually the bus comes in with month, month and a half worth of time to physically work on it before Cedar Lake gives you a deadline to come pick it up for May thirteenth, May fifteenth is race day. And they come and pick it up two days before. So your deadline is the thirteenth, and it comes really fast. Our struggle this year was with snow on the ground up until the beginning of May or late, a little later, we didn't have, we did not have as much time as we thought we would need, but we made it work. The way we made it work was with the wonderful assistance of Principal Newsbaum um, for opening up the school for Saturdays for those who wanted to come in and put in extra hours working to get the bus ready. And again, countless hours of put into this bus, which usually takes uh, usually about a good solid month to gut and ready the bus for the race. We got done in three weeks, because we had to have a lot of the major work done before paint had to go on. And again, struggles with paint and weather.
Do you make modifications to the engine? And if so, what modifications did you make?
Um, so I've been doing a lot of research. The only way you can do it is if you send out the ECM PCM to a company, and they tune it, which is they flash it. They had, I don't know, we had, probably two hundred fifty hours to tune it or something like that.
Yeah, a bit of that.
And then, well, we saw, we didn't do it the year before because we had no contacts. But then I got to talking, and actually Bob Sather's son, named Mike or whatever, Mike Sather. We sent it out to him. I got to talking with him and then Dominic, and then we sent it out to Power Hungary. They tuned it. Since Mike Sather has contacts down there. They, actually, they got it in like two, two or three days, sent it back, same week, I got it put in. Runs good. That's about as much modifications you can do.
Yeah.
You could only add two hundred and fifty.
Okay, that's a lot for a boss. Upward at two hundred thousand.
Think that had anything to do with winning the race?
It does a lot with winning the race. Again, we were fastest bus by far. It was lost lengths of difference.
And then transmission cracks in half.
Yeah.
After the race.
After the race.
At the end of the race.
End of the race. We got lucky and it snapped at the end of the race. We did it before, we would have been true, true disqualified, not holding a trophy. Um, as far as more time goes, you have maybe a couple hours to rip out everything important in the bus that night at Speedway. So that includes all the lights, the roll cage, seat. We took our super awesome ECM out and brought it home with us in hopes that we get another bus that we can use it on. But, yeah.
Is it kind of a lottery of which districts get picked to do it?
Usually you put it in, and then they pick you.
Yeah.
They're usually, probably up to twenty schools, or they usually enter.
They gotta bring the champs.
They usually bring the schools that come back, and they usually get last, or then they move into the next school or whatever. We've been in it for six years, about.
We bring a lot of people. They, they see that there's a lot of blue.
Yeah. A lot of, a lot of central, um, students, some, some staff, parents, they all go to watch it because really it'd be a fun night at the racetrack to go watch because it's school watches crashing into each other. Um, they do a spectator drag, which is everyday people taking their cars out and racing around the track. And every guy's dream, right? Everyone's dream to take their own vehicle out and get a qualification time. Um, and then you have your standard classes of cars that night because they have a schedule that has to move on with the season too.
You guys got a video show us?
I think we do. Oh, yeah. Highlight video?
Is he laughing at people there? We cut him off. It's good driving there. Did you guys have rehearsals? That's pretty good.
My kids love it. Like, they go early, they get their trucks lined up.
Yeah, it's a fun, it's a fun night. Everyone with trucks goes and they park on turns three and four. It's just a wall of trucks with flags, and everyone's sitting in basically roadside couches and truck beds watching the races.
We get out of there, like, the parking is.
Mm-hmm, parking is down the roads, overflowing into a farm field across from the racetrack. It is a huge night. They do ticket counts, and it's it's thousands and thousands of people, really. It's like a day at the fair, really.
Questions? Questions for our crew?
I just love the pink, something to think.
To wrap up a little bit, um, we lost a pretty special crew with Crazy Legs and Sarty. Um, they've been a big part of this, this bus for their whole eternity, and, um, I think we'll probably see him sneaking around a little bit, but I really want to recognize Ms. Razer, who's moving to the back there a little bit. Because not only did she jump into this as a new staff member, um, how she maintained order and structure, um. There was a time that they were painting, and I counted twenty-four kids out there, including one of our ID kids, Logan, was out there. Um, included a lot of people. Um, it was just really fun to watch the passion. Um, and the, and the work that these guys did, and, um, but I, I really want to recognize Ms. Razer because not only she jumped into it, but took it on full force, brought some structure. Um, knew where the kids were most of the time. But, uh, it was pretty awesome. Um, it was pretty awesome seeing everybody out there. And these guys don't get enough credit. I know Jack, he had a large part of all the welding, and I know Sarty was doing a lot of the work on the engine, so these two guys put a lot of work, and Jack's hopefully is learning from them, so he can help carry the torch.
Can I go next to the gold balls?
It will, yes, right.
Just lastly before, um, thank you so much, um, for inviting us here to acknowledge these hardworking individuals. They just went, as I said, they deserve all of this credit for their hard work, and their years of experience in doing this for so many years. And they really are passionate about it, and to have this kind of program just showcases their leadership skills, their accountability, their, um, their ability to communicate and compromise with one another. And I think that together, because you allow us to do this, um, that it supports preparing our students with exceptional character, uh, with knowledge and skills to thrive in our ever-changing world, our district mission, and I thank you.
I think you should have.
You guys have to sit through the meeting.
Yeah. I think, I think next, I think next year you should have a board member be, take a lap around the school.
I'm gonna tell you why. There was a couple times when Mr. Newsbaum was sitting in his office, and it might have been after hours, and that bus would run around the loop, and it's like, what is that? You'd enjoy it.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Good to see you.
Thanks, Crazy Legs.
All right, moving on. Number seven, comments by board members and superintendent, the referendum update.
So, uh, again, the 4K edition is complete, just minor, minor punch list items. Uh, furniture decided to get, uh, that are needed for the resource area. I probably bought it for the 4K. The playground's a huge hit. Um, kids love it. It's the F Lane, the crown jewel, I think of the facilities. Kids love it. Um, and then, uh, at, uh, high school, um, the virtual slash alternative academy office is substantially complete. Um, just again, a few minor things, basically the furniture, some of the desks are, um, I need to come in yet, uh, the twenty-third, so very soon. And, um, Mr. Kingman Flanders, alternative ed teacher is in there working with kids, has been three weeks or so. Um, it's, it's beautiful, and, and the bonus again is that the auditorium lobby is, is bigger now too, so that's, that's, uh, certainly a plus for that, for that space as well. Um, yeah, what we call Area H and J, the egg slash business wing up back, and J, the main, um, CTE preca, or prefam, precast section, um, continue to progress nicely, uh, it's right on schedule. The, um, the, the roof and everything scheduled to be watertight, everything by November first. And then we'll work throughout the winter in that space, uh, finish the interior work. Um, yeah, I, yeah, obviously the parking lot, the parent, the last east part of the parent, uh, drop-off loop, um, hasn't been paved and, and, and won't be, um, until the large equipment or set, uh, done setting steel girders on there. Don't want to ruin that, so that's gonna remain, uh, gravel actually until next spring, but it'll be opened up a week from Monday is the plan. Um, and the, uh, the, uh, soccer football track area, again, um, is substantially complete. Really just waiting on, um, the sign, or close over the archway of the ticket booth. That.
Striping.
Oh, yeah, striping on the track continues to delays, and there are windows closing with the weather and painting a track.
It's almost better to wait till after winter for that.
Yeah, we discussed that today in our meeting. Um, they can go to a oil-based if temperature's right, which is actually better, and they won't charge us. Um, but yeah, uh, if they don't get here next week, probably is not gonna happen till the spring then. Um, yeah, anything else? Anything else to add, Peter?
Well, things are going well. Moving along nicely.
Yeah.
Moving on to fall regional meeting report. So Derek Lance, myself, David, and Jeff, and Tim and I all went on, was it last Wednesday? Two, one.
Two, one ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, it felt a little bit more like an update, just with the change in leadership and some maybe what to look forward to at the annual event in Milwaukee. Wasn't quite as substantive as maybe I was hoping for that. But, yeah, I mean, Josh, you're gonna love it. They're gonna show them the delegates meeting, I bet, so. There to go. Good to go. Dave Roos drank all their coffee, pretty much.
That's a fact. Anything else? We'll move on to the scones. Our staff appreciation for scones, want to talk about that?
I will, because those scones are delicious. I mean, like.
We've been at them special.
I'm a, I'm a scones guy. I don't do coffee, so whenever I go to a coffee shop, I get a scone and some water, some food.
Did it get any to the staff?
Mayor may not have had three or four as the morning went on. I walked it all off though, because I delivered it to the rooms. I mean, not that we haven't aimed, but just throwing it out there.
Bite size?
Bite size.
All of them, yes.
And not a single complaint from a single staff member. They were like, these are delicious.
So we all divided up. Lance and I went to high school. You guys had the.
Elementary.
Middle.
Middle.
Yeah. And we just say thank you to the staff and give them scones and have a chance to connect and visit and hang out in their lounges, or we kind of walked around. It was Wednesday, so it was late start day, so they were in their community meetings. So we were able to step into those meetings and chat with them and get some feedback, and it was just nice to see them. Any other?
It was great. It's great. I get to tell the teachers I sit up late, cook bacon them.
Really? They were delicious. Thank you. All right, moving on to third Friday count update.
We. No, it's just for Joe.
Your screen.
No.
Computer got tired.
So the third Friday official count, which you see in the monthly attendance update, far right column, again, it's complicated. I'll, I'll try to explain it. Um, so again, that is the number of resident students that attend our district, either in person or through our virtual academy. That's that number, and then it's also taken into account summer school, um, and reduced a percentage as well as 4K, um, and a smaller percentage to get to our. Um, and a smaller percentage to get to our FTE, full-time enrollment count of one thousand six hundred and eleven this year. Which is factored into our revenue limit worksheet, um, and basically has to do with our, a big part of our funding model. How much, how many students we have is proportionate to how, how we're funded by the state and state and local levy. Um, so we're at one thousand six hundred and eleven, um, first blush, um, let's see, well, uh, I'll notify you that is down from last year. One thousand six hundred and seventy-two for our third Friday count. Um, and that was predicted by our population study with the low birth rates in our county. And it's proportionate with seventy-five four K kids this year versus ninety at this time last year. And, um, elementary, uh, I'm sorry, kindergarten is down ten kids, so, um. I'm sorry, it's down twenty, eighty-five to one oh five at the third Friday count for four K. And, um, kindergarten, one-ten to one-hundred, so we're down thirty students in four K and K. And like again, as predicted and somewhat expected with low birth rates. Um, the rest of our district, though, grades one to twelve, down thirty-one kids for total, um, down sixty-one from one thousand six seventy-two to one thousand six hundred and eleven. So that's the third Friday count, uh, the good news is that our open enrollment continues to increase, uh, largely because of our virtual charter. School, as you can see, uh, looking forward to our exhibit eleven A, two hundred and thirty-two kids. Choose to enroll in our charter school, thirty-two, uh, which are resident districts and, and also enroll in our virtual school. So kind of a good news, bad news, uh, we are allowed to make one-time exemption, um, we're declining enrollment. Uh, we haven't experienced that in a long time, um, so that amount, I believe Chen's gonna cover later is.
About a hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Yeah, that is forgiven and exempted, um, so it doesn't impact us this year. Again, the revenue limit is based on a three-year rolling average, so those enrollment fluctuations are smoothed out, understand. Understanding how districts have to, uh, operate and, um, you can't be adding staff and dropping staff at the last minute, for example. Jen will cover that a little more in detail, anything to add with third Friday? You know, Jen?
Um, I would just say that the last time we had a declining enrollment exemption, the following year, our. FTE was up enough so that we didn't actually lose that money. So it increased in the second year, so it worked its way out instead of, you know, having to make those cuts. So with it being the birth rates being low, low, you can see, but. Potentially we would need to. Our revenue increase for next year would be as high, I guess.
So again, it doesn't change the way we do business, we always are, uh, eye on the future and, and, and doing what we can to attract. Families, entertainment of the families here, um, so we continue, uh, to do that. Uh, do wanna point out the third Friday count, that number, right, that one thousand six hundred and eleven is what goes into the budget, that Jen will submit by the end of this month. And that's set for the year, we can get thirty more and thirty less and it doesn't change the funding for this year. Um, contrary, open enrollment is counted by the day when we get kids. Every day that they're here, no matter if they come May fifteenth, right, we get to count those, uh, corroded and, uh, over the course of the year, hundred and. Um, seventy-five days, for example, we're funded and that revenue comes directly from the district from which they, um, reside. So that change of funds happens district to district, just like the hundred and twenty-two kids we send out, we gotta. Write a check to those districts for those kids.
So is the per pupil al- dollar allocation, uh, less for the virtual students?
The open enrolled amount is less, it's like eighty-six hundred this year.
Instead of like the ten-four or whatever.
Right, that is different than our, for our resident students, that amount for this year is eleven thousand one forty-eight or something.
Okay.
Alright, any questions regarding the third Friday?
Moving on to, um, paperless exhibits.
Um, you know, Kelly runs off many, many, many pieces of paper for exhibits on the table for your, your table. Right, and just wanted to pose the question to the board, if you wanna continue with the, the paper model? Or are we, you know, in the district office, making a push to go more and more paperless as much as we can, so we. Thought about the board and asking you if you're okay bringing your device and looking at everything paperless, minus a few handouts at that point as well. Or just having them ready, uh, to display for the public.
The only reason that wouldn't like it isn't here, so we just better go paperless.
Exhibits would go on the TV?
Yeah, yeah. And then we could maybe run a few typically, right, we've, I mean, there are many meetings where it's just Mr. Green in the audience. I mean, I, you know, I don't know, it's, and I don't know how much people look down, but you can always put them up on the TV.
Right, some, there's gonna be some that we have to have or whatever. Other than that, I think you should go with it. Yeah, it does seem like a big waste. I don't think I've ever used it, I always use my laptop.
Yep, I think so, and if you need to take notes or whatever.
Vote on that?
No, we can't.
Like, can we do? Alright, so. Moving on to scheduled presentations by guests and staff members, we've got summer school report, middle school.
I do some students, they're also really hungry, so.
Don't eat my scones.
Alright, so yes, I'm Jackie Haller, that's the middle school assistant principal and summer school director, um. I have a few numbers to report out, but I also have an, a special experience or, um. Offering that we gave this year during summer school, and so I have these ladies behind me, um, to share on that, so you guys wanna introduce yourself now?
Hi, I'm Dakota Gentile.
I'm Ray Lantowski.
So two of our eighth graders, um, and we'll share that in a little bit, so. Um, summer school, you know, our dates, um, in June are four day, four weeks, um, four days a week. Um, summer school is for grades first through eighth grade, um. We were at elementary school and the middle school, um, I had a staff member at the elementary school who kinda helped me out over there while I was at. The middle school, I'm just kinda helping run the ship, um, just because there's a lot of, a lot of kids, a lot of bodies. Um, July, we have swimming lessons, those last two weeks over in Ellsworth, down in Ellsworth. Uh, Mr. Malar kinda runs that down there and helps me out. Um, we had a lot of kids sign up for that and I'll show you those numbers here in a little bit. Um, and then lastly, we have the August summer school session, which is invite only, so those are students who maybe are a little bit below, um. Scores and reading and math and then their teachers kinda compile a list, um, an email goes out to them and we see who are interested, so. So here's the offerings, obviously it's really small, um, but recruiting staff is always the challenge, right? So you send out that email in April, looking for people interested. Send it out, well, actually it started in January, I think, just to let them know, you know, it's cold months, we've got summer coming, it's gonna be. Nice out eventually, anybody wanna do anything during June, um, so I got a lot of, you know. The numbers are pretty low with the staff, but we make it work, right, so we get a lot of students to sign up and we don't try to turn any away. And then, um. And then we've said that, we figure it out and figure a way, um, so this year, the elementary, we had, um. All those class offerings, as you can see, we've got the board games, fairy tales and fables, uh, fitness games, um. There's math, you know, we try to stay away from the academic piece, um, unless we make it fun, you know, kids wanna come to summer school and it, and they wanna have fun. Um, they were part of the rema- you know, the remodel is going on, so there wasn't the fun laid around yet, but they may do with the old one, um. So, so that was good, at the middle school though, we only had six classes running each session, um. And the one that we really, I really am kind of excited to share with you is the service learning, um. And that kind of came about, cause I was trying to think how I can get middle school kids interested in coming to summer school, you know, give them something to do, something to look forward to. Um, and I wanted to offer it to the older grades, you know, the fifth and sixth are coming in and they, they still like to play those. Structured games and they like to come and play or they let, you know, all of that, um, but the service learning is something that just kind of. Interests me and I had known, had connections with, um, Cherie. Um, uh, Cherie Morton up at Pilot Casters, and so I just reached out to her and said, hey, do you have an interest of? Kids helping out during summer school, absolutely, you know, and she was on board right from the start. She's like, when? And I gave her some dates and she was thinking it was gonna be a single day and it ended up being two four-day weeks, which was awesome. Um, and then I also had a connection with Twenty-Two Farms, which is the animal sanctuary on twelve. Uh, and I reached out to her, Gina Mizell, and she was just as excited. So, that's when I brought it up to the, the, it was part of the registration and I got about sixteen kids. And signed up for it and Miss Malachek, she's never taught summer school in her twenty-five years. It just caught her eye and she said, absolutely, I will lead that group, so that was pretty cool. So, um, before I move on to those pictures, I wanted to kinda show you these ones, there's a couple from. The one is the elementary, just a student out at recess, you know, they get two, three recesses. It built in between their classes and they just love that, even when it's hot, um, they're out there and playing, running around and. Um, the top right is this, it's a kind of a, it was called, it's kinda like mind, mind. Like the mind game that you play on your computer where you try to click a square, and if you click it and it has the bomb in it, then the game's over. Well, he had all these little red solo cups and underneath it were a couple bombs. So the kids, there were like three different groups and so one group gets to set all the bombs. One group gets to watch it and then there's three or six out in the hall that then come in and then they play and the kids loved it, every game that, that teacher who is. A teacher from a different district, he had come in and he had done that and he, the kids just loved it, they ate it up every single day, so. Um, bottom left is part of the service learning and then on the bottom right is, um. A young composer, so we had a young composer class and the teacher had the kids write and then she actually got. Donations and new people and they published the book and so they would send in their work. It came back a hard copy within like a month and so they're pretty proud of that, so. Alright, so here's kind of the numbers before I show you the fun, um. You know, in June, we had, we had quite a few register, two hundred and sixty at elementary school and we just didn't have one attend, so two hundred and fifty-nine kids at the elementary school. Um, at the middle school, we had a hundred and eighteen and again, just one didn't attend, um, something comes up, you know, it's the summer and. And so, you know, for three hundred and seventy-eight kids coming to summer school, it's pretty awesome, um, and I know Sandy's gonna speak to the. The feeding, the food program that we kinda tried to build in there as well, um, so. Uh, for swimming lessons, we partnered with Ellsworth, like I said, the class Jonas Community Pool. Um, there's a gentleman down there that I work with, excuse me, so this one, we had a hundred and fifty-three students register and that was probably in May. Um, and so that's the number that we kinda use, a hundred and thirty-five by the end of July are able to make it, so. That number was down quite a bit, but, um, I went over there and did it and it was just, it's way cool, just to see all the kids. Doing their thing, you know, and all the staff that are working with them, all, it's all hands on deck. Um, Mr. Hallmark does band lessons, um, for the middle school and we had a hundred and ninety-three during the summer and. They all came and did what they needed to do, um, and so as you can see at the bottom of your commit work during the years, um. The twenty-twenty-three, the numbers are down a little bit, um, and that number is. Uh, so it's all the summer schools, it's the strength and conditioning program that's held at the middle school and the high school. Um, you know, you can see those numbers, the strength and conditionings put on in the morning before the school day starts. Um, so fifty-nine kids registered at the middle school, uh, fifty attended, um, and then at the high school, a hundred and twenty-six were registered with Katie. Um, that attended, so, um. Any questions with that, it's a lot of numbers, wanna do that, you know? Derek?
It's a Carson Hooper you worked with down at the pool.
Yes, yeah, so I went down there the day I went down there too, I, to meet him, he wasn't there. So, we've had a lot of email exchanges, but nothing, and without name to face yet, so, students funded, go down there with Dave.
Let him up.
I followed it.
Um, so here was, uh, at the end of the, at the end of the June summer school, the kids wrote a thank you. Big banner, thank you to all the construction workers for working on the school and they knew that the playground was coming and just really excited, um. We had, there were freezies that were left over that they got to, well, I don't know if these guys enjoyed, I'm thinking. I think in August, um, but yeah, it was just a really good picture, Ms. Hugh got for me. Um, this was some pictures from the swimming lessons, uh, the day I went down there and the top left, the little boy did not want to go in the water. He wanted to play hide and seek around the pool instead and eventually he went in and pretended it was just like him taking a bath and then I got Mr. Malar in there. And they just, he got his water time, so, um, that's what's cool, you know, giving the kids the opportunity. No matter what level they're at and just letting them have some fun, so. And then here's some pictures from the farm, so I even have a couple of the, the staff, you know, those great models, Ms. Malachek's out there helping the student. With the drill. Do you guys wanna talk about these or do you wanna, why don't you jump in, Maelyn? You're good.
So, um, we spent most of our week at the farm. And then there was a couple here and there where we went to a nursing home and later in the week we did a food drive. Um, but both of these farms, both of the ladies who ran it, Gina and Cherie, this farmer, I'm familiar, were really good about. Organized and we had a really awesome time with the animals and. Working with just the farm as a whole, it was a really good way to get involved.
Tell me, tell them about your experience, tell them your initial thoughts.
I'm gonna be completely honest, going into this, I did not want to. So going into it, I had a really bad mindset of how it was gonna be, I thought it was gonna be terrible and. On the first day, I didn't get hurt, but it could have been worse and. After the first week or two, I really enjoyed myself being with my friends, getting to do a bunch of work for the community. I really enjoyed doing the nursing home, the food drive, just. Being with all the animals and like doing the work, it gave me something to do, I was interested in it. And I got to be with my friends, so there was ups and downs, but I was still all around with it.
Yeah, Ms. Malachek said after the first day, she was, she was surprised if anyone returned. But all of them did, um, so like as you can see, you know, they have some fun with the animals, which. The animals at the sanctuary are animals that have been, you know, they've been defected, abused, in kill pens, um. So just even getting people out there to interact with them is, is awesome, um, the kids painted, they stained. They cleaned out the stalls, um. They painted horse jumps, yeah, at Pine Lake, they painted horse jumps, um, they, let's see what else. Lots of manual labor, yep, and that was kinda what, they started off really hard at the beginning and so Ms. Malachek was like, I don't know, I'm gonna get them back, but. They did and actually a couple of the boys ended up going back and volunteering sometime on the weekend, so, um. This is some pictures, you know, there's Ms. Malachek, I don't know who snapped that shot of her, but big thank you to her for running this and. And just kinda being the, the contact, um. Taking out the horses, they, the Twenty-Two Farms had a huge garage sale, um, that they're raising money for their, their nonprofits. And it got all wet and they needed to put it away, it was like the day after and so these guys. Cleared it all out, tried to clean up as much as you could, but it was quite the, quite the process and, um. She even let them all take a thing or two if they wanted to from the garage sale, so do you guys get anything?
Um, I got a pair of shoes.
See?
Got some new soles on them and they're really nice shoes.
Perfect, yeah. Um, a little bit more, a lot of kids working and that was, and that was the thing, it was just, you know, get them out, get them doing something. Um, and giving back to the community and feeling really good about it, um, so. Every, each of the farms, they had a fun day, so they worked, worked, worked and that last day that they were gonna be there, they got to do some fun, so at. Pile Lake, they got to ride horses, um, so here's just some of the, the pictures of them on horses. And then at Twenty-Two Farms, they have this blow up, the bounce house, and so they threw that up there for the kids, uh, Gina provided donuts. They had water and. That was just kind of an all-around, really great experience that I hope to, hope to continue this coming summer. So.
I'm not on the agenda, but as a parent of an eighth grader, she didn't want to go to the summer school because. There wasn't anything for her. And so when service learning came about, that's huge from a parent's perspective. Because I want my children, because we all know that volunteering is a good thing. But there, there's some, um. Some, what you get in return, you can be selfish too while you're volunteering and it's, it's good to help other people and it helps you. And to instill that in kids when they're this young, I think is huge. Because they're going to want to go back, they're going to want to have those feelings and they're going to want to help those people and. And it's just a huge win for everybody. And Raylan wasn't lying. She came home and she said, I hate it. I don't want to do this ever again. I don't want to go back. And. I was like, I need to stick it out for a few days and, and if you legit hate it. I, I won't make you do it. And I knew when she got that appreciation and when she saw. The fruits of her labor, she would like it and she ended up loving it.
Yeah, so with these friends too, you know, they did a food drive, um, they helped out at the Heritage Center, um, pull and brush and put it into a pile that they were. Told where to stick it and yeah, it's just, it's really great.
Awesome, awesome. No, you guys have to stay.
Sorry, we, we need mac and cheese. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for coming.
Okay, um, so next we have food service guys from Sandy. Yay, food, talk about the food.
Alright, I know. So we have um, curly skewers. So um, there's some fresh fruit in there too. And I did make some scones, some blueberries scones, made them into um, little pipe sized pieces. And I know that that team really likes um, them. So then I like really cold. The presentation, I'm a little embarrassed about the presentation because my icing didn't like smooth out. It's a little choppy, but I'm sure they're going to do it.
I'm sure.
I'm for sure. Exactly. And to speak to the summer school, so. We did about a hundred, like averaged about a hundred, a hundred and four. I think one day we got to like a hundred and twenty kids. Uh, the first couple of days, it was like, you know, nobody knew. And so I was out in the lobby going, you, you want to come and eat? And there was like parents there with their, with smaller children like. You can eat too, as long as you're a part of the family and they're enrolled, they, they could do it. The kids that came over to help from the high school. I'm like, I'm hungry? And um, so I had, I really got them to eat. So it took me about three days to get them to, to lay gear out, but it was a very successful and um. Looking forward to it this, this, this June. But back to my fall food service update. Um. I'm Sandy Stepplewitz, I'm the food service director. Low food service catering, you realize that the, the food service department kind of stands alone in a school. Um, they have to support themselves, their own selves, you know, we pay for all that, whatever we make from the kids that eat. It stands alone. So catering is a great um, uh, little added thing that the food service department, because it doesn't really charge us. You know, I prepare it, of course, but because of the type of contract that you have, it gets back into the food service department. So I have to charge for market price because DPI and USDA um, uh, mandates that so that if you were to go outside. Um, because sometimes I use some USDA foods or food that I already purchased for the school, the school lunch. Um, but we were very successful. You can see some of the scones. I am branching out from the blueberry to um, a little apple cinnamon and we had some raspberry, um, white chocolate. And then of course, we did the all-school.
Just like hit my heart. Raspberry with white chocolate.
Yeah, yep, yes.
That'll work.
Alright, well, I, I, I can do it. I can do it. So let's get to the elementary school. Um.
How do we order this? To tip for takeout?
Well, you know, you can come and have lunch with, at any of the schools.
You just swipe a card or what do you do?
No, I put it on the visitor. Of course, the business review is not one to pay for it. But you keep it up with your own, your children's account. Four sixty-five. It is a deal.
Why you get a call at five o'clock all the time? I got a text.
It's a deal for four sixty-five, you know, come, I, I.
I eat lunch. I go, I eat lunch with my high schooler.
Yes, yes, it's wonderful. I'm very proud of it. Um, so Charles has something called Discovery Kitchen. So Discovery Kitchen is a setup that you can see, but a setup, it's got a backdrop and then it's got a cover that goes over the table. This particular day, I was at the elementary school and we were tasting bananas on butter rollups. I don't bring peanut butter into the, the school district unless it's in a smucker's contained for all of the allergies. But I had, you know, all the kids that were standing there, they tried it, you know, there was a couple of kids there, now they walk by and go, I don't know, but they liked it. I don't think as far as um. Production, Ruth would not be able to keep up to do it, but we are featuring this because I had a tasting at, at the um, middle school. And they loved it. As you can see here, I demonstrate, I show them. I mean, it's a tortilla with, I said you can use peanut butter, you roll the banana up, it's a nice afternoon snack, but Discovery Kitchen was powered up for September. So that's, it's a good healthy type of thing for them to eat.
Sandy, ever since you told me about this Monday, I've been wondering, what, what's in sun butter?
Sunflower seeds. It, it does, I mean, it can't be tasted and there we go. This isn't peanut butter. I go, no, it isn't. But, you know, do you like it? It's okay. No, I, 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 I got a better, um, I think I went to the yard. Um, I don't know how to go back. Is it twelve blocks from there? Stay, oh shoot. Anyway, it was, it was a hit at the middle school. So now Cindy is having them on Fridays. So this um, last Friday was the first time and she said, I was hitting this, you know, the sun butter, the smucker's real peanut butter and some of the other things that we have. But at the high school, the Discovery Kitchen at lunch, um, I had a roasted cinnamon sweet potatoes. Hmm, it was okay. I had some kids, I do a tasting and then get the reaction to the kids and then put it on the menu. But the big hit was the teriyaki broccoli salad with sesame seeds. That was a huge hit and the sweet corn salad with ranch dressing. Um, as you can see, you know, I had some kids that uh, you know, they let me take their picture and like just smile, you know, stay, stay sincere, taking pictures. And I think Pam was there one day too, making some pictures. Um, commodity fruits and vegetables. So at the top, um, there was a, there's a new program uh, nationwide and it's called um, LFS. I'm sorry, I don't really act in it, but I got an email one day and they're like, hey, would you like to have thirty-eight hundred dollars worth of, you know, free fruits and vegetables? I'm like. Yes. And so it's, it's, it's not real local. I mean, some of the apples that I get are from Vermont, but. That organic roasted root vegetable with ro- rosemary, it was a huge hit, a huge hit at the high school. It has beets, root of eggplants, sweet potatoes. And um, some squash. The other organic yellow cherry tomatoes and red peppers, we served that at the elementary school. And then we had a farm direct cordless and a macintosh apple. But the biggest hit that we've had so far for vegetables at the high school is the fresh. Uh, roasted um, green beans. Uh, my commodity choices last year, I decided to not get any commodity um, vegetables. I put all my money in them. I think protein is where it's at, it's the most expensive. Um, just to be able to get this kind of fresh, I write my fresh north. Uh, celebrating a homecoming, I decided this year to pull up the tops and actually do some decorating and I think the kids kind of enjoyed it. Um, so now I have some decorations for next year. The equipment that we purchased last year, the high school at Pinkerton Ginger, it's beautiful, I love it. Um.
Wait a minute, the pizza's not a big square anymore?
No, that's at the elementary school. It had a workup to the. I, I can't give them wrongs too quick.
I love square pizzas.
Uh, Tony thinks a really good pizza. And in the center, the elementary service line, they had new hot wells and a new uh, cold wells. Um, and then at the high school, I pulled, I got a new condiment cart. So we're not serving off of that little tiny little station. That they can have two sides and so on. And the middle school also got a new condiment cart. That's it. Nice insurance. Any question?
Well, then you do the, the, you know, the tastings.
Yes.
I think that's just the coolest thing ever because. I'm watching that menu and I know there's lots of that, that I didn't eat well into my late twenties because I'd never had to before. So to get a, kind of into that. Trying stuff and it's a really neat idea.
And, and giving them a seat.
Yeah.
So there's another program that I'm going to start. I still haven't gotten all the equipment, the background and so on. It's called student choice. So I'm going to, it's a high school secondary um, program where they'll have like three different types of things. On my first, the first uh, choice is. Mac collagen. So it's mac and, mac, mac and cheese with different toppings. So you can have shredded pork. You could have some diced chicken with buffalo sauce. Um, and then you have toppings. So then you have some roasted vegetables and if you like extra cheeses and some other vegetables to do that. And then the kids get to vote. At the elementary school, it's called mood boost and it's you are what you eat. So maybe, you know, if you eat this carrot, you might be a little happier today. If you have this cinnamon, you know, you might not crouch. You know, but so, so I still haven't gotten that going yet because I'm still waiting for some t-shirts and some background. Um, but now the kids are getting to know me. Because for a while they were afraid and, and so I walk in and just, you know, and they're like, who's that? We don't know her. And now when they see me in the, in the dining room, they're like. Hey, we're going to do some tasting, you know, what did you bring for us to taste? So that does my heart good. Um, I, I'm starting also a newsletter. So you'll be getting emails from me at the beginning of the month, um, with a little bit of a newsletter. I was hoping. To have the haunted house that I'm creating at the elementary school. So I've covered the whole front of the serving area at the elementary school with black paper. And made dungeon doors and so on. And so I, I wasn't able to finish it, I'm sorry. But it'll be in the newsletter. So you'll get to see that. Also, I wanted to say we're up for bid this year. So that's going to be quite, we're starting, Jen and I are starting to figure that out. Every five years, uh, contracted. Food service goes up to bid. Um, it's been a little different with COVID, but now this is the year. So we're up for bid this year. So. I hear a lot more from you, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, oh yeah. Who wants to clean up the food?
I'll try, we will.
Yeah, take care of it. So. Is it all still in the conference room?
And it's still safe, you know, we still got.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm sorry.
The only thing is the ham and the turkey.
You look a good eater. We'll take a, we'll take a recess. Just over here, just growling. Belly button's rubbing a blister on my spine.
You look like it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, so moving on to financial reports. We jumped the treasurer's question.
Income balances is on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Assistant State Bank checking, five million eight hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents. Assistant State Bank money market, one million seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-five cents. Uh, fund forty-six, fifty-five dollars and forty-one cents. Suicide, suicide prevention fund. Four thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and nine cents. Uh, fund thirty-nine debt service, uh, hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and seventy cents. Uh, fund forty-nine referendum, fourteen million, two hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and one cent. Fund eleven, also referendum money, three million, five hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy cents. Uh, fund twelve, hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars. For a total fund balance of twenty-five million, ninety-four thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars and twelve cents. Motion approved.
Fans made the motion. Dave second, any discussion? Alright, if you can, all in favor?
Should I just bring the food in?
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright, moving on to the consent agenda. Should we not have any? We've got the consent agenda. So their family stuff.
Are you all from it?
Yeah.
We'll make a motion to accept those.
Dave's emotions, Ben second. Discussion. All in favor? Here's um, administrative reports, student enrollment update.
I basically already gave that, you know, seven eleven eight, any, any questions on that? Um, just want to thank all of the ladies in the office for this and the third Friday count. Uh, lots of work goes into. Counting every single kid and making sure it's, it's, it's more complicated than you think with open enrollment especially. Thank you. So I just want to thank them uh, for their. Perfect, actually, just a lot of work. I appreciate it.
So moving on to fall, which is the key word for our school board, choose definitely any of your recommendations.
Alright, um, first like to recognize Addison Coldfall. Congratulations on earning second team honors. In the NBC All-Conference Girls Golf Team, recognizing Izzy Savelko, Lucy Mansell, Brianna Popehagen. Uh, congrats on earning honorable mention status on the NBC All-Conference Girls Golf Team. A thank you to Todd, Lisa and Jonah Postrick. Constrick, thank you for giving back in all the hours you have volunteered to keep our flowers and plants alive and, and beautiful at the football field. It is very appreciated.
Did you know they just came? They just did that.
Really?
The family just took it upon themselves and saw that and. They watered them all the time and I think he said they would be dead or maybe it was Brian that said they would be dead if they left it up setting, you know? So it was just a really neat, neat thing for Jonah and his dad.
Yeah, it was kind of a funny story because this happened to be out there Saturday night at about seven thirty. And I was driving back there and they were in doing the flowers and. All of a sudden they kind of got their car falling out and they wanted to explain why they were inside the truck and it's like, no, I saw what you're doing. I really appreciate that.
They still look beautiful.
Yeah, you're doing a great job.
Thank you. I wanted to throw one thing in and I think this is the best time to probably say it. I had a call from a dad that's in Somerset School District. Uh, his daughter had had some issues with the school district before. I don't know, wasn't able to make her way in there for one reason or another. She's doing online schooling. Um, and this guy's, this, the, the, the father uh, is so appreciative of how the daughter is being received and. Um, just the growth that he's seen from her. I wanted to tell Steph when she was here, but she folded before we got the opportunity, but. Now he's more than likely going to end up in Roberts in about a month. Um, and if it's not then, it's going to be shortly thereafter and he's bringing his eighth grader online and um, bringing him here to Sanctuary Central also. So just kind of kudos to what our staff and everybody.
I echo that, right? We talk a lot of this, toward the administration staff about uh, offering opportunities for kids in their, their passion areas, right? Part of a strategic plan. You saw it tonight, right? Bus races, the summer school and the. Opportunities unique, I think, to our district. And online, like you said, the virtual schools provide opportunities. So. Something certainly be recognized and celebrated and um, appreciated. So kudos to our district, everyone. appreciated. So kudos to our district, if everyone, again, it goes into that. Again, people make a difference.
Thank you. Okay. So next we go to core agenda items. And we've got consideration of budget, the tax levy and mail rate for twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year.
You should all have a, a packet in front of you. So as we do each year at this time, we have to set the levy before November first. So we can get that interlinked into the municipalities by November eighth. So we're here tonight to, to do that. Um, there's some things that have happened since the annual meeting as, as always. Um, the first thing I wanted to point out is the enrollment, as, as Tim talked about earlier. Um, the three-year rolling average did decrease by fourteen FTE. So the numbers that you see on the revenue limit worksheet will look a little bit different than what Tim presented earlier. And that's because each student has an FTE assigned to them. So for example, our early childhood students are only a point five FTE. Our four K students are a point six FTE. So when you look at the revenue limit worksheet, our third Friday count looks like it's one thousand five hundred and seventy-four, which is lower than the sixteen eleven, but it's due to those prorations. So we did, um, see quite a large increase in that. Our revenue limit is just over eighteen million. And that includes the non-recurring energy efficiency levy of five hundred and three thousand. And also includes this year, uh, adjustment for prior year uncounted open enrollment students. That was twenty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars. And then that one year declining enrollment exemption that we talked about was just over a hundred and fifty-six thousand. We also added in the second year of the operational referendum for three hundred and seventy-five thousand. And that will continue for the next eight years. Online, each of the revenue limit worksheet, that's the yellow worksheet. You will notice that there is a levy amount of a hundred and twenty-six thousand for the statewide parental choice program. This is something that we first saw last year on our revenue limit worksheet. We don't know this number until we receive our certification in October. But what happens is these are parents that have chosen private school for their students. And so they allow the district to levy the amount for, I think it's the open enrollment amount to help pay tuition for those kids. And then it comes out as an expense in our books as well. So it's kind of a wash. So we have the levy for it and then you'll see an expenditure change on the other side for that as well. So the property valuation of the district, we estimated an eight percent increase when we set the, when we had the annual meeting in July. The October certification came in at a sixteen point eight five percent increase. The bad news was that we did see a decrease in our state aid. And I think a portion of that was due to, you know, we've been levying additional funds for prepayment of debt, which we did do last year, but we're not actually making that prema, prepayment until this year. And your general aid is based on how much you spent as a district. So ours looks like it dipped down because we didn't actually make that payment last year. And so I'm assuming next year, once we make that prepayment again, that will increase back up to previous amounts or maybe even higher. So then if you continue on the next page, I have laid out all the changes, what it was at the annual meeting, what it will be at the, just that for the tax levy. So of course we have the changes in source two ten, that is the actual levy amount to the taxpayers. And that is in conjunction with that decrease in state aid that there is more going to the tax levy. I did increase our interest on investments slightly. Rates seem to be stable. The long-term outlets, outlooks being stable. Um, and those rates did bump up a little bit again, so I felt comfortable adding a little bit to that. As well as our open enrollment in, um, we had already met our goal of what we had for the annual meeting. So we bumped that up for first that increase. Source five ninety was just a small adjustment. That was for our Carl Perkins aid. And then of course you can see our general aid decreasing. We also will have a slight decrease in source six ninety for our per pupil adjustment aid because our three-year rolling average is decreasing. That amount is based off of that. Fund twenty-one and twenty-seven, the, um, transfer from fund ten to fund twenty-seven for those special ed students will decrease slightly as salary and benefit changes mostly for that. So here's where we come into the, and I'm not sure exactly how to do this now that we didn't pass a motion um, for the Davis Street property. I'm not sure, because we have to do this by November first. If we can't have the meeting by November first, do we still pass it both ways? Just in case we are able to meet prior to that? And if it's declined, then we'll set it as scenario two.
I don't think, we, we won't be able to have the meeting before then.
I, I doubt it.
In violation, yeah.
Yeah.
Notice the meeting laws.
That's in two weeks. What day is the first?
It's Wednesday.
It is Wednesday.
Some direction from the board?
I, I don't see any harm in passing it both ways. And that way, if by chance we are able to meet before, if there isn't a two-week posting requirement again, then we would be able to as it passed.
True. What would you do for the actual budget though for that? You gotta submit the budget right by end of the month.
Right, right. So that would be, we would have to grow it scenario two then. I basically laid it out as scenario one is levying that additional hundred thousand into fund eighty. Scenario two is levying that additional hundred thousand into fund thirty-nine for debt service.
What's it?
Debt person.
Yeah. But what, what have we done? If this property came up in January, what would have we had to do in that situation if we wanted to do this?
Most likely we would structure the debt payments so there were no payments due until the following fiscal year. So that would.
So could we negotiate that if we, if, if something happens, right? I don't, I don't, I don't feel comfortable using a number that's nothing really.
Which, which just depends what fund it goes into.
Yeah.
The total levy amount does not change.
Until next year, right? The extra hundred thousand?
We know that. So this was coming from this.
Yeah.
So if we're unsure here, we can still put it back to there for the prepayment of debt.
Okay.
Versus here for investment.
But we were gonna actually have to levy the extra hundred thousand, right? That's where your fifty dollar.
The levy amount is the same regardless of which scenario we're looking at. It doesn't change the dollar amount.
It was pulling from every payment.
It's just where are we going to put it? Are we putting it into fund eighty or are we putting it into fund thirty-nine to prepaid debt?
There's no way to transfer that later if we change our mind.
Only if we pass it both ways.
When the next meeting can be held? Push to the gym. Proceedurly.
What was that?
You say can, I mean, so we had some action items of following up to determine when the next meeting actually could be. So we don't know when that is.
Correct.
So procedurally, do we have to approve scenario one or two tonight? And then we're stuck with it? Or can we find out?
Well, you see, it's only going to be one or two situations.
No, I know, but, but if we decide to take that money and put it towards the prepayment of debt and we have to make that decision today, that's probably the path to go because the rest are unknown. If that money was to be used towards a down payment, um, investment.
So going into tonight, my thought was, I mean, we still need a yes approval from the community. But there is also a petition period and that doesn't run out until the twenty-eighth, I believe it is. So that's, no, of, of October. So regardless, even if we had an approval tonight, we would have needed to pass the levy both for both scenarios. And then it'll be in the motion that if the property purchase is approved, then we will levy the additional hundred thousand into fund eighty. If the property purchase is not approved, we will levy that hundred thousand into fund thirty-nine.
Yeah, that makes sense. And the, the fund eighty was actually for Daisy Hill. So we're not even sure that.
No, no.
No, it was, that hundred thousand was for the nine point five acres.
Yes. Because we weren't sure of a payment on the Daisy Hill property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, so those are the two different scenarios and how that would change as far as the revenues. And then if you flip to the next page, you have all the expenditures. Um, same differences, annual meeting compared to October tax levy. And then you have your scenario one and two. The majority of the changes were related to like new staffing and benefit changes. For example, our health insurance, we had originally budgeted an eleven percent increase. It came in at four point eight percent increase for twenty twenty-four. Dental insurance, we originally budgeted five percent. It came in at one point five. So those are the types of changes for the most part that you're seeing within fund, the fund ten and fund twenty accounts there. Um, of course, function four hundred and thirty thousand is adding for the, that statewide parental choice that I talked about earlier. And there was one other, oh, function one hundred and thirty thousand also went up quite a bit. And that was due to just a staff coding change. So they were in this function. Now they're going to be in this function. It's still the same cost. And then again, you can see scenario one there if we're levying that hundred thousand into funding maybe. Or scenario two, if we're levying it into fund thirty-nine. And then you can see the two motions. I've also added in smaller type there, the motion from the annual meeting. So you can see what those differences are. Basically, the only difference in the actual motion is the amount for fund eighty. Cause it doesn't, it doesn't change our fund thirty expenditures. Because if we levy it into fund eighty, then we, it gets complicated, but we levy it into fund eighty.
Are you hamstrung with what you can do with the money if we levy it into fund eighty, right?
Yeah.
But, but can you move it from fund thirty-nine to fund eighty after the fact or can you not?
No.
Okay.
Can I pose a question? Maybe I'm not supposed to. If you feel like we screwed this up. Okay. So from fund thirty-nine, the prepayment of debt is officially would kind of be, but it wouldn't be because we have not officially acquired the debt yet.
But fund thirty-nine is for referendum approved debt?
Okay.
And this debt would be non-referendum approved, which is actually fund thirty-eight. So we would levy into fund eighty, transfer it to fund thirty-eight and then make those debt service payments. That's why your fund thirty budgeted expenditures are not changing from in either scenario.
You can't levy into thirty-eight.
Right.
Be out referendum approved either.
No. I, I will leave it up to the board how you want to.
Well, we're gonna have to make a motion to, we're gonna have to approve it both ways, scenario one and two.
Do you think that makes sense?
Otherwise we're, you're hamstrung with, we don't have any flexibility.
Right. I mean, I, I guess we could, if it did pass in two weeks or whenever we're able to have that meeting, um, we could use some of that fund eighty fund balance that we have reserved to make any payment that would be do. That would be ideal, but it could be a possibility.
Steep I allow you to amend the budget?
It's four hundred and seventy thousand in fund eighty now, right?
Part of that is the daycare and central rec though. So the main fund eighty has about three hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Tim, what was your?
Does the EPL allow you to amend the budget after expenses in October for unique circumstances?
No.
What consequences to using what fund eighty funds are available? And depleting it further? Like, is there risk to something else if? It is approved in cash level thirteen for the wrapper home.
Not really. I mean, we could, in the following year levy a little bit more into fund eighty to help replenish that. That could be an option.
What is, I, I guess, is it at a certain level today for a reason? Or is that kind of our, our buffer for community activities when needed?
Right. So it's because sometimes we'll add programs in the middle of the year. And we've, we've levied seventy thousand dollars a year for community service for quite a few years. Um, and then during COVID is when we've made up most of the reserves because we weren't running the YMCA program at the middle school, which has a higher cost and some of those things, you know, kind of were on low. So that bumped up our reserves a little bit.
Do you have any? Soft serve?
Yeah, what's your direction on this?
Think you'd make the recommendation to do them both and, um, if you had to, yeah. One over the other, you go with the the, the, the sure bet.
Yeah.
Prepaying debt. Because we don't know.
Doing anything is going to decide.
Yeah, by approving both, you essentially don't.
But you still, you find it in by the first. We aren't.
Can you give them two budgets?
I can't.
I don't know. It'd be like, I don't.
I'm.
I think it's fine just doing. I'm just, like you said, the sure thing is the scenario two with the prepayment.
Otherwise we're gonna have money in there that we can't.
Can't touch.
We can't touch.
I'd rather go to something.
But I'm guessing we don't collect the interest on.
Sure.
Something sure. I mean, there's no benefit to having it in there, right? If it's one percent interest rate, something, it's low, that doesn't do any, has any real.
It's not a ton of money, but you know, we're planning on about over a hundred thousand dollars this year in interest overall as the district. Of which that would be a portion.
Right.
But approving both at this point is we are probably, we aren't going to have that meeting. And I just don't think that it looks like we can with all the notices and so I don't know why we would need to approve it because.
Okay, let's, let's phrase this another way then. So let's say Daisy Hill, uh, does get voted through. Do we have enough money in fund eighty to, uh, get squared away and, and take care of the initial take on cost of Daisy Hill? What, you weren't gonna pay the whole note right off the bat, right?
Correct. Yeah, that, that's why that payment isn't in either scenario because it was so small. It would have been so small.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think we probably, I, I think I'm talking myself out of it both ways. I think we probably have to, uh, scenario, uh, they fit fund thirty-nine. I don't remember. Scenario.
It's scenario.
Your, your motion could keep it, you know, bold. Would be with the, um, you know, um, wording of depending on the outcome of the community um, vote. You know, if there isn't a vote and we aren't able to have the vote before October, then that's your decisions by default, right?
Right. Right. That would be done by default then.
Sorry, I didn't word that. It's a long one.
Well, the way that Jen ordered it a few minutes ago was perfect, I thought. I don't remember exactly what.
You just repeated it.
I know, I don't care what she said.
Great, he's coming off of his coffee.
Can we play it back?
You started out to say the property purchase was approved, then we could levy into fund.
Right, so as the property purchase is approved at the special meeting.
Well, approved prior to, yeah, right?
Before November first.
Correct, there you go.
Then we will levy a additional hundred thousand dollars into fund eighty. If it's not approved, then we will levy that into fund thirty-nine. We still need the motion though as it's written.
Erica's writing it word for word. She's gonna put the motion up.
Oh, you are.
I'll second that.
Well, there's no possible way it could be approved by the first that makes a little.
But you don't know yet, Dave. There might be a way.
I don't think there is.
Okay. You guys should have, if you didn't want it, you could have voted on it tonight. There was more days in here than yes.
Actually, the land purchase, I was, I didn't know which way to go. I didn't feel educated enough. That's why I made the motion I did, to be honest, cause I couldn't remember what did they sell that whole property for. I was trying to find it and having a hard time.
What, I think it was a million, wasn't it?
He sold it for a billion. The county. I think, I'm on.
He bought it for that.
So. We ready?
We're ready.
Go ahead, Erica.
Oh, no, no.
What is, what are, what are we calling this? The budget? I just call it the budget.
Budget tax levy and mail rate.
Okay. I motion for budget tax bill and levy.
It's written out on. To approve.
Administrator's recommendation, there's the page three or four. This recommendation, scenario one.
Okay. I approve, or I move to approve recommendation scenario one. Um, if the.
No, to approve a tax levy.
You approve this whole thing?
Yeah.
Oh, my bad. Okay. I move to approve a tax levy of eleven million, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year with a mill rate of point zero zero nine two zero zero seven two to support the fund ten budget expenditure. I have ninety-five million, three hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-three. Fund thirty budgeted expenditures of eight million, sixty-two thousand, thirty-one dollars and fund eighty expenditures of five hundred and ninety-five thousand.
Yeah.
Now there's the word. If property purchases are approved.
Purchase.
Purchase.
Purchase for Davis Street.
For Davis Street. And.
Prior.
To, prior to November first.
I think that should cover it. Yeah.
I think that's enough, right?
If that doesn't happen, then.
Or.
You gotta read that next one.
Yep, or.
We approve scenario two. To approve a tax levy of eleven million, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year with mill rate of point zero zero nine two zero zero seven two support fund ten budget expenditures, twenty-five million, three hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-three. Fund thirty budgeted expenditures of eight million, sixty-two thousand and thirty-one dollars and fund eighty expenditures of four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Serious.
If the property.
If the property doesn't.
If not.
The property is not approved.
I'll second that motion. Thank you.
Lance made the motion. Eric second.
You write it all down?
Yeah. Any more discussions? No more discussion, all in favor?
All right. Thank you. It was a lot. Appreciate it.
Thank you. That's by far the longest.
Make this very easy to comprehend.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, this is wonderful.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we can move on to our second readings of board policy. And that goes.
Through J.
Through J.
I move to approve the slate B through J.
Second.
Any, so David made the motion. Eric second, is there any discussion?
Nope, let me, not here.
Right, there are none, all in favor?
All right.
Oppose? Right, motion carries. Um, we've got consideration of the first readings. Uh, K through U. They're just readings, we don't need to approve them. So then we move on to consideration of the approval of eliminating the board policies.
So move.
Well, second.
Vince made the motion, Lance second, any discussion?
Just double checking or eliminating ones that we put in place?
Yeah, um, B, B, agenda B. B, yep.
All right, so any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
Oppose, motion carries. Uh, future agenda items. Any?
Good, at the next meeting, could we have? Um, so when we do the referendum talk or whatever, just numbers to where everything's landing so far? Oh, yeah, like, you know, within like, like each bucket or whatever, China, so.
You bet.
Do we want a, a follow-up to maybe the status of?
I guess that's a special meeting?
Yeah.
That will be held. Prior to that, anticipated to be held.
Yeah.
Sure. So Kelly, if you could, just please make a note, uh, possible future agenda items under the um, schedule presentation, the, the Mark and Johnson world update and the special meeting.
Um, moving on, is it, moving on to upcoming important dates. November fifteenth is our strategic planning committee meeting at six P M. Here at the district office, November fifteenth, our school board meeting at seven at the district office. December thirteenth is um, our December school board meeting at seven here at the district. And then we have uh, January seventeenth through nineteenth is the Wasva State Convention.
Just a quick update, strategic planning meeting, again, the, the goal is to go over the um, survey, community survey results, which is, that's the report card or the postcard that went out to every district mailbox, all four thousand people are mailboxes, residents, residencies uh, that could potentially give their input. Uh, uh, it's what uh, they turned in in one people's mailboxes last.
Right, that's Friday, yeah.
Yeah, and so today we're at thirty-two, returned.
I delivered all of it.
Don't remind you, we're asking for input, encouraging the community for input on a strategic vision and direction our district wants to go.
Yeah.
Okay, so that'll be.
And we got thirty-two?
Thirty-two will be the day.
No.
Should we also add the special meeting dates? Should we come into our?
B B D, yeah.
Right there, Jim. Okay, are we good? All right, so.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
So Lance made the motion, Dave, second?
It was quite tight on the second.
Favor? All right. You're good.